Hello, everyone. I'm going to call to order, it is 9:06, the Central Health Board of Managers Strategic Planning Committee Special Meeting. It is 9:06 on November 30th, 2017. We are at the Travis County Administration Building, 700 Lavaca Street. And with that, I am going to actually start with number two on our agenda, which is confirm the next regularly regular Strategic Planning Committee meeting date, time, and location. The next regularly scheduled Central Health Board of Managers Strategic Planning Committee meeting is on December 8th, 2017, at 5:30 PM at Central Health Administrative Offices, 1111 East Caesar Chavez Street, Austin, Texas, 78702. With that, I will now go to our first item on the agenda, which is receive and discuss information regarding the following: A, population data; B, healthcare needs in Travis County and the central Texas region; C, improving health outcomes for low-income Travis County residents.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, I'm Mike Gieson, President and CEO of Central Health. We're the local agency that provides healthcare for the low-income and the uninsured in Travis County. And through our partnerships, we finance a full range of primary specialty and inpatient hospital care. This is our fourth workshop in recent months in which we focus on a particular issue. And with us today is the Strategic Planning Committee meeting, and we want to say thanks to the guests that are here in the audience and for those that are joining us via the broadcast. Today, we're talking about the geography of healthcare. And to frame today's discussion, this is about people where they exist and the health conditions that we see in Travis County and in areas surrounding Travis County. And it's important to meet people where they are and the care and their health needs as they exist today, but as we think that trends may take us into the future. And ultimately, it's about developing strategies and the supporting budgets to provide the best possible care for the patients that we serve. So much of what you will see and hear today, you may know by observation, or you may know just through life experiences, or because you're privy to other reports and data sources. And I think you're completely justified in saying, "I could have told you that," and rightly so. But, you know, part of our methodology here at Central Health is to take data, as well as community input, and check in with both frequently to make sure that we're on the right trajectory in terms of our planning and future budgeting. So why this information and why today? So there's three reasons. One, we want to share our data, not only through broadcast, but with the audience members here today, so that you know what we know. And we look forward to a robust and future dialogue that challenges our strategies to make us more responsive. Second, you know, understand that this is the beginning of a process where we start putting together strategies for healthcare delivery that will help build the 2019 budget. And we're starting this much earlier, you know, in part just my experience in working, you know, the first year in Central Health, but making sure that we're checking in with the community again, so that you know what we know going into that budget development season. And third, we want to be transparent. Again, we want you to know what are driving some of our future decisions at the staff level and ultimately at the board level. So with that, we'll hear from presentations from Katie Coburn, Manager, Regional Healthcare Partnership 7 at Central Health; Kristi Garby, Vice President and Chief Strategy Officer at Central Health; Jason Fournier, Chief Executive Officer of Community Care; and JP Eichmiller, Director of Strategic Communications of Central Health. So first, we'll start off with Katie.
Good morning, everyone. This is Mike Sett. I'm Katie Coburn, Manager of Regional Healthcare Partnership 7. And in that role, I lead Central Health's duties as anchor for our central Texas region in the 1115 Medicaid waiver. Our region consists of Bastrop, Caldwell, Fayette, Hayes, Lee, and Travis Counties. And in that role, we are required to complete a community needs assessment. And in fact, this needs assessment that I'm going to be talking about today is an update of the one we initially conducted for our region in 2012. It is a required component of our region's Regional Healthcare Partnership Plan Update. So we had a plan before. As the waiver progresses, and we know what's coming in the next few years, we will develop a new plan based on the needs we find here. That plan is necessary for our region to be able to participate in the Delivery System Reform Incentive Payment Program, or DISRIP, and to earn the money through the waiver. So this is a key part of that. What this assessment gives us is a fresh look at the social and economic and health environment for Medicaid and low-income uninsured populations in the region. And it will be the foundation of DISRIP's future, of DISRIP Providers' future planning. To complete the assessment, not quite there yet, sorry. To complete the assessment, we worked with Health Resources in Action, which is a consulting group with a lot of experience in needs assessments and working here in the local community as well. And we used a number of both primary and secondary data sources to get a full, as full a possible picture of what the both health and social determinants of health needs in the community are. So we used quantitative, qualitative data, local assessments, conducted focus groups with providers and patients. We implemented an online survey in both English and Spanish and had stakeholder events to collect input for at the beginning and end of the process. So really have a varied look at, of data sources for this information. Okay. So this report is available online, and we have the link for you later. I believe it is comprehensive, and I recommend you take a look at it. I'm going to be sharing just some highlights today. And here's a summary of the themes that we saw. A key theme, and I think this we heard the loudest, was affordable housing is scarce in the region, particularly in the urban core, and it is seen as driving the migration of low-income populations out of the urban core into more rural and suburban areas of the region, with a number of impacts on access to care that we'll talk about as we discuss this theme. We also found the persistence of both racial and, I'm sorry, of health and economic disparities across racial and ethnic lines, so we'll talk about that. Physical health issues that were noted as kind of outliers were chronic diseases, prenatal care access in rural areas, and rates of sexually transmitted infection. Behavioral health was another key theme that we heard across multiple data sources. And finally, accessibility of healthcare and transportation's impact on that access. That ties into this migration issue, and we'll discuss that more as we go through the themes. You'll see here, there's a mixture of social determinants of health and health indicators that came, that arose out of our assessment. So to talk about the first theme of affordable housing and migration, this slide shows us the median monthly housing costs for renter-occupied units in, across all the counties in Region 7 compared to Texas. Housing affordability, as I mentioned, was one of the most consistent themes across all interviews and focus groups. And what you see here is that median monthly housing costs for renters increased between 2010 and 2015 for every RHP7 county, with Lee County and Hayes County seeing the largest increases. Travis County remains the most expensive place to rent a home. And it doesn't show it here, but other data that we found is by 2015, a third or more of the renters across RHP7 were also considered cost-burdened, so defined as they're spending more than 35% of their income on housing. So in Hayes County, more, 54.8% of renters were considered cost-burdened, more than half, which is a considerable number. In Travis County, nearly 41% of renters were considered cost-burdened. Key informants, I'll give you some quotes here, really clarified what the impact of affordable housing is on access to care as families are moving eastward. One said, "If families can find housing they can afford, it's not in the city core. So whatever savings they're getting from finding low-income housing, they're spending on getting to work and getting kids to school and just getting around." So as people move away from the concentration of healthcare resources that we have in the urban core of Travis, they're having to spend more time, more money, and accessing fewer transportation resources out in farther east counties than they have in the city center. Let's see, so we can move on to the next theme. So the next theme was economic and health disparities that persist in the region beyond, along race, racial and ethnic lines. We found this in the 2012 assessment, and it remains an issue today. This median household income by race, ethnicity in 2015 speaks to one of those economic disparity indicators. Overall, in the region, the median household income between 2010 and 2015 rose across RHP7. And yet, these large income inequalities by race, ethnicity are still observed. Across all RHP7 counties together, African-American residents had median household incomes that were an average of $19,700 lower compared to white, non-Hispanic residents. The median household income for Hispanic residents, those with the dark blue bars there, black or African-American was the orange bars. Hispanic residents were an average of about $15,000 lower compared to white, non-Hispanic residents. So economic disparities still exist. We have a couple slides here about health disparities. This is one example of a number of data points we have in the report that note health disparities by race, ethnicity in the region. We have here self-reported high blood pressure by race, ethnicity in 2015. Nearly 45% of black, non-Hispanic adults in RHP7 reported having hypertension compared to 28% of whites, white, non-Hispanic adults. You can see the quote here, this is a theme that came up multiple times in our interviews and focus groups. "We can't continue to see the health disparities in African-American community get worse. It's about the needs being met." So again, this is one example of a data point that shows these racial and ethnic disparities. I'll note that the Hispanic population has a much lower rate of self-reported high blood pressure by race, ethnicity. And when we get to the next slide, we'll talk more about why that might be. This data point shows the percent of adults without a personal doctor or provider by race, ethnicity in 2015. Nearly half of Hispanic adults in RHP7 reported they did not have a personal doctor or provider compared to 22% of whites. This indicator may shed some light on the slide we saw before, and our stakeholders pointed out that because among the Hispanic population, with so few having regular access to a provider, their data may not be showing up accurately in self-reported health outcomes or diagnosis, because if they're not accessing a doctor, they may not know they have high blood pressure or diabetes. So both access and health outcomes, along with economic disparities, still exist in our major issue in our region. We can move on. So now to talk about some physical health concerns, I have three that I want to point out. What this chart shows you is a matrix of the leading cause of mortality in 2015 across all RHP7 counties. You'll notice that the top two leading causes of death across all the region is either heart disease or cancer. So chronic disease is really the major part of the health burden in our region. I can tell you for 2012, this looked very similar. The heart disease/cancer one or two rating may have flipped, but it was the same, so that continues as a major issue here. In 2015, what we see, one change we see is the appearance of Alzheimer's disease as one of the leading causes of death across Texas in Bastrop and Hayes Counties. That is an indicator that points to, supports the growing older population in our region. So that is a change that we're seeing. We also heard from a number of stakeholders about problems in access to prenatal care and maternal care, particularly in the rural areas of our region. You can see from the quote here, 63% of the providers that responded to the stakeholder survey rated access to prenatal care as hard or very hard for the low-income community in Region 7. The data here show premature birth outcomes comparing 2012 to 2014. And across most of the region in Texas, premature births remained steady or declined, with the exception of Caldwell and Fayette Counties. And you can see that premature births rose between those two years. We also saw the same trend in low birth weight babies, rates of low birth weight babies born to RHP7 moms. So all of these points together, we think are pointing to real gaps in access to prenatal care for low-income families. And again, we heard that at stakeholder, from stakeholders as well and key informants. Our final sort of physical health outlier that I'd like to draw your attention to is sexually transmitted infection, or STI rates per 100,000, comparing 2012 and 2015. It doesn't show it here, but this data is from the Texas Department of State Health Services Center for Health Statistics, and that's noted in the report. When we completed this needs assessment in 2012, we identified sexually transmitted infections as a concern in Travis County. And as you can see from the data on the far left, it remains a concern in Travis County, and it is growing. What we didn't see last time and do this time is the expansion of the issue of sexually transmitted diseases into more areas of the county. You'll notice on the farther left side, Bastrop and Caldwell, for both gonorrhea and chlamydia saw significant increases in their rates of sexually transmitted infection. So STIs really are a growing and expanding problem for our region. Next, behavioral health was a theme that came out loud and clear from stakeholders, focus group participants, key informant interviews. The data I'm showing here as an example is from our online stakeholder survey. And community members and providers were each asked to identify the most difficult services to access, from a fairly long list of those services. You'll see among both groups that behavioral health services were the majority of services identified as difficult to access for our region. Behavioral health was a major focus for the 1115 waiver in our region, and we saw a lot of expansion of access and new delivery models come online. I think what we're seeing with this data is that there's still more work to be done. And we also had some great quotes that kind of encompass what behavioral health access looks like, according to our key informants. One says, "We don't have good continuum of care models." So the mental health services that have popped up are for crisis or long-term care, but there's nothing in the middle where the majority of the need is. We also saw in our assessment, and this is in the report, that behavioral health providers, along with physical health providers, do tend to be concentrated in Travis County and are not evenly distributed across our rural areas of our region. So our final theme that we saw, and this is one representative data point for it, is the theme of access to care really defined broadly, and transportation's impact in that, access to transportation. This slide shows that an actual bright point in this needs assessment, the percent of the population under 65 that is uninsured decreased across every county in the state between 2012 and 2015. And I think we all understand that to be due to the Affordable Care Act and the accessibility of new insurance programs through the Health Insurance Exchange through that legislation. And yet, as you can see in the quote bubble, "Insurance problems and lack of coverage or cost of co-pays had made it harder to access care for approximately 40% of the community members that responded to the survey." And we had more than 200 people respond, so that is still, affordability of healthcare is still an issue, access to insurance is still an issue in our community that needs to be addressed. But beyond affordability, we also looked at timeliness of services. Both community members and stakeholders really noted a need for more services after normal business hours. They were clamoring for new delivery models that allowed providers to come to them. That's what we heard from our rural patient focus groups. We heard themes that navigation services need to be increased, and many community members feel frustrated that they just aren't aware of services that are available to them. And then finally, the issue of transportation and the location of services. Again, this idea that the uneven geographic distribution of healthcare resources puts a strain on families who are moving farther east, away from where those providers are primarily located, and the transportation resources that aren't available to those families in a way that allows them to access care easily and affordably. So those are our key themes. One other final note I'd like to leave you with is as we talked to stakeholders and key informants, leaders across the community, we did note a finding that social determinants of health are really seen as a key component of addressing health issues in our community now. And that is a change, that five years ago, we weren't seeing that as part of the discussion. Today, it is. So I feel there's, there's real openness to partnering beyond just our healthcare delivery silos in addressing these needs. So, thank you.
So Krista, we'll go to you. What we'll do is we'll facilitate each presenter, and then Chair Greenberg will then facilitate the question, the discussion among the committee members, and then any audience members that might have questions or comments. Go ahead, Krista.
Well, good morning again. I'm Kristi Garby, Vice President, Chief Strategy Officer with Central Health. And at our September 12th Strategic Planning Committee meeting of the Central Health Board of Managers, Cassie DeLeon gave this presentation on the community health assessment that was conducted by Austin Public Health. And today, I'm going to give just a brief review of that, because you've already heard the in-depth presentation. But as you can see on this slide, the community health assessment and the community health improvement process involves quite a few partners working together across lines from mental health, the Seton Healthcare Family, the Dell Medical School, and you can see Cap Metro there too. So we're really working across not just healthcare, but the community at large, to look at the issues that we face in this community and try to address them. Next slide. So, you know, Katie was speaking to you about the six-county community health assessment. This is a health assessment that includes Austin and Travis Counties, so I'm going to drill down a little bit geographically. We're focusing now on Austin and Travis County. And the Austin Public Health Department conducts this for their accreditation process and for the planning purposes. And it also includes the methodologies, very similar to the RHP7 community health assessment, includes quantitative and qualitative data, as well as community engagement activities that were extensively put forth, including a door-to-door survey that occurred. So there's a lot of information that feeds into this, so it's a mixture of information that I'll be reporting on that's both quantitative and qualitative. Next slide. The areas of interest or the highlights that I'm going to bring forward are these that are bulleted. I'm just going to speak briefly to each one of these. As we talk about the themes, you'll start hearing commonality between what you heard from the larger county region or the multi-county region. And starting right here with equity and health impact. As Katie noted, in Travis County and Austin, median home values increased more than median incomes increased. And in fact, in Travis County, 21% of the residents paid rent that exceeded 50% of their income. So you mentioned 35% as being cost-burdened, but actually, 21% of individuals are paying rent that is over 50% of their income. So this is, we're going to build this picture of what it is like to try to survive in some of these conditions, and how they affect life quality and health, and how they're interconnected between housing, transportation, and the effect of people's actual experience and lives. We know that the Latino-Hispanic and Black-African-American residents experience poverty more often than other races and ethnicities in Travis County. And having a low income is associated with health risk factors such as smoking, higher rates of smoking, higher rates of physical inactivity, and low participation in both health screenings, as well as lower health insurance coverage rates. And among the populations that Central Health serves, the incidence of obesity, diabetes, cancer, heart disease are higher than the population at large. So we have, people think of Austin as this healthy, wonderful place, you know, we have the, we have the, let's just say, reputation of the green belt. But there is a side of our community that is almost, in some, some days, invisible, but there and struggling and really hard to see, but there and really having difficult times. Education and workforce development, this is an area that feeds into, obviously, poverty. And what was learned in the health assessment is that there's room for growth and development. I know there's a lot of efforts underway in our community, but the system for higher education does not work well for non-traditional students. Residents identify gaps in the healthcare workforce, such as diversity and cultural competence, that really need to be addressed. And the education and workforce development efforts around public health efforts could be strengthened as well. So I think those are some unique aspects that came out of this Travis County and Austin health assessment that can feed into this overarching conversation. And it's not directly, you know, a health intervention that could assist in this area. Around healthcare access and affordability, one out of every six Travis County residents forego seeing a doctor due to cost. So that's, that's a significant portion of the population who say, "Hmm, no, I'm not going to go in and get seen for this right now because it's too expensive. I need to pay my rent, or I need to figure out that car payment." And really, about, about half of those who earn less than $25,000 per year are uninsured. So we have a greater burden of uninsured for those who have lower incomes, for those who are paying, some of which are paying, we heard, more than 50% just for their housing. So you can start to see how this all can snowball into a situation where individuals are really having to overcome some very large challenges on a daily basis. In the area of transportation, we know that while there is access to some public transportation, as individuals are moving further away from our city center and our county center out into the more eastern, northern, northeastern, and southeastern areas, the buses are not always available in those locations, they don't always run at convenient times, and it can take a very long time to get from an outlying area into a city center on public transportation. So that issue is an issue that we'll have to work together across sectors, both, I would say, public, private, governmental sectors, to really figure out how do we solve some of these transportation issues. In mental health and well-being, as Katie mentioned, this is an area that has come up for our community, and Central Health has been working on the area of mental health for many, many years. I think what we found is a bit unfortunate in that the mental health paucity of services is maybe even greater than we thought. And although we were able to fill that with a lot of programmatic efforts with the 1115 Medicaid waiver, there is still a great deal of unmet need. We were able to do some things around crisis and inpatient, but now filling out that continuum of care is really important. And individuals who identified mental health stressors said that 18% of Travis County residents reporting, reported having five or more poor mental health days in the last 30 days. So they also identified, of course, poverty and immigration status as stressors in their lives that contribute to poor mental health. Safe recreation really addresses an issue around physical inactivity and has this interplay around how active someone can be. When we see, and JP's going to show you, kind of areas where poverty is concentrated, and in those neighborhoods, there are often challenges with safety, sidewalk issues, lighting around playgrounds, and safe places for people to be outside. And that feeds this physical inactivity and calls for interventions in that area as well. And then with regard to access to healthy food, 8% of our residents who are low-income do not live close to a grocery store. And what we saw between 2012 and 2015 is that as this population migrates outward, people, low-income folks are getting further and further away from grocery stores, not closer. So there's issues around how to access healthy food options in So there's issues around how to access healthy food options in these neighborhoods.
Kristy, just to clarify, you said 8%?
8% of low-income residents.
Right.
And lastly, in environmental health, you know, the conditions of your home or your apartment are very important for your health. We know that the, you know, presence of pests such as cockroaches can exacerbate asthma for individuals. And so what the assessment showed us is that individuals who are renting have difficulties really getting their home environments to a place where they're healthy. They have trouble with maintenance and pest control, and they also have difficulty accessing home maintenance services. So that ties in with a lot of the themes that Katie brought forward. This report too is online and available, and I think it really shows that there's a lot of cross-cutting work that needs to be done in partnership with many entities and community members to address these needs. So, thank you.
Thank you. Before we move to our next two presentations, I think, I want to tee this up. What you'll see is the geographic representation of a lot of the data sets that you've previously heard, and not just on a county level basis, but on a much more refined basis than that, down to precinct levels and certain, excuse me, census tract levels in certain instances. And so this takes it from, you know, what shows up as statistics to actually looking at it in mapped form. And also looking forward as best we can to see what the strategies need to be, whether that's fixed location or mobile strategies or transportation, including, and this is an important part of the healthcare strategy, what the outreach is around enrolling individuals and making sure people understand the services that are available to them, but also, once they access those services or are enrolled, how to best use that system to optimize their health. So there's not just the healthcare delivery strategy in terms of the medicine and the good health and the prevention, but also the enrollment and the information. So I just wanted to tee that up before we go to the next presentation. Jason?
Thank you, Mike. So Jason Fournier, I'm the CEO of Community Care Health Centers. Very pleased to be here this morning. Good morning, Board of Managers, community members, and those that are viewing online. I have the privilege this morning to talk about our preliminary findings from Community Care's Comprehensive Community Health Needs Assessment. And I think what you'll, what you're going to hear across each one of the presentations is there's consistency of themes that have, that are coming out relative to the various different assessments. We're coming at them from different approaches and also coming at them from different, in fulfilling different requirements. And so for Community Care, we have a requirement as the co-applicant with Travis County Healthcare District with Central Health, as part of our status as a federally qualified health center, at least once every three years, the U.S. Health and Human Services, Department of U.S. Health and Human Services requests and requires that we go ahead and complete a needs assessment. So that's what this is actually helping us fulfill. When we take a look at the overall reason behind the federal government asking us to go ahead and complete a needs assessment is to ensure that we understand comprehensively what the needs within our community at large are and that we're utilizing the resources they put in our trust, both at Central Health and at Community Care, to ensure that those folks that are in need of healthcare service, direct primary care services, are receiving those services and that we understand what the gaps are in those services and what the resource constraints are and how we best can utilize those services moving forward. And so it's a very formal process through a federal grant application for which we have to submit every three years, and that's one of the reasons why this is an important undertaking for us. What you see on this particular slide, and there's some consistency across this presentation that I'm providing today, in that the outlined area in red is going to always be Travis County. And so you're seeing Travis County as a whole. In this case, you see blue circles with little white crosses in it. Those are actually Community Health Center service delivery sites across the area. And what you see in the middle of this particular slide, it's difficult to see, but concentrated in the downtown corridor of Austin, is a medically underserved area. And one of the things as a federally qualified health center we're required to do is to direct our services towards either a medically underserved area or a medically underserved population. In Austin and in Travis County, there's 10 census tracts that are designated as medically underserved area. Of note, that area has not been updated by the state or the federal government since 1994. When you take a look at our community and how rapidly it's changed since 1994, it doesn't take much to understand that there's a need for us to update this. And so there's some work that's already starting to be done relative to this. When you look outside of Travis County, so you can see the surrounding counties, you'll note that they're all in blue. That's because they've had governor designations at the county level as medically underserved areas. And so one of the unique things is that at a county level, a governor can go ahead and request that the federal government go ahead and assess an area for medically under-service. And so that's happened previously. So when we take a look at our community as a whole within Travis County, one of the things as a federally qualified health center, we have to designate what the federal government is, is what is our service area? And so we have a federally designated service area. Our service area for Community Care and Central Health is Travis County. All of you in here are very, very familiar with the fact that there's been rapid growth, but as part of the needs assessment, we have to demonstrate changes demographically that are occurring within our community. And so since 2000, we've seen almost a 48% growth in the overall population in Travis County, significant growth. We know that's outpacing almost every area in the country. And that in and of itself presents unique dynamic changes for us to consider in terms of how the population. Down at the bottom of the slide, you can see just how rapidly changing some of the age growth is. One of the learnings for us at Community Care was the fact that the, from a percentage basis, the fastest-growing segment of our population is actually those over the age of 65. Grew in the course of six years, from 2010 through 2016, by 44%. Now, in terms of sheer numbers, it's going to be the 18- through 64-year-old. But in terms of population percentage growth, the age of population has actually accelerated. And when you dive into it a little bit further, there's some good explanations behind that. Breakout on the right-hand side, down at the bottom, you're actually seeing a breakout on race and ethnicity. What you're going to see, and what you've already heard from both Katie and Kristy, is there's common themes across these. When we dove in further at Community Care into the demographic information census data, what is very clear within Travis County is that resource constraints and accessibility really fall along racial and ethnic lines. And disparities and inequities fall along racial and ethnic lines. So if you belong to a minority group, you have less access to resources. Your burden, the burden of disease is disproportionately shouldered by those of minority groups within our county as a whole. And ours, I'm not going to talk about that specifically this morning because that's already been discussed, but we saw that trend consistently across our research as well. So when we take a look, not only do we have a federally defined service area, we then have to communicate to the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services who are target population. And we've just got, we align with what the federal government requires, which is their targeted grant funds for community health centers is for individuals who are 200% of the federal poverty level or below, who are uninsured or underinsured. And so we've aligned with that. So all Travis County residents, less than 200% of federal poverty level, is who we consider to be our target population. Our estimate for 2016 was 322,000. I need to update this slide because the population estimates have come out. It's actually a little bit less than 316,000 in terms of the overall estimated population at 200% for Travis County. And I'll come back to that in a little bit. When we take a look at total estimated number of uninsured individuals, a little bit over 194,000 individuals. So we look at uninsured and we look at those less than 200% in terms of having potential need to be served by a community health center. That's how the federal government's viewing this as well. When we take a look at those individuals who are uninsured that are less than 200%, the burden of uninsured actually falls heaviest on those that have lower incomes. So 40% plus of individuals who have incomes less than 200% are uninsured. And so that's something that we're extremely sensitive to as we're looking at this. In our fiscal year, which ended at the end of September, we served 96,777 unique individuals. So you take a look at the number of individuals that we serve comparative to those that are sitting in each one of those buckets with our partners across the county, there's folks that are certainly in need of access to primary care, and that's one of the things, and will continue to need because the service delivery system is not at the level that is going to meet all of the needs of, needed within the community. So looking at the graphical representations, the maps here, just very quickly, you can see concentration of populations along the I-35 corridor, which is consistent with what most would assume. Female distribution actually is, you know, this is 52% skews a little bit more towards the I-35, a little bit more west, but it's only off by a couple of percentage points. And then looking at populations below 200% on the left-hand bottom side, and then on the right hand for kids, you can see that populations below 200% really are focused and reside more consistently on the eastern portion of the county overall. So this is a very busy slide. I apologize, but there's recurrent themes that are going to come up. So as you kind of work through this slide and you look, you look at the concentration of pediatric populations, vulnerable populations, from an income perspective that we're sensitive to as a community health center, is really look at where are the pediatric populations. It also is an indicator of where future growth is and where families are choosing to reside. And so this is all based on American Community Survey from 2011 through 2015. And so you can take a look at the concentration populations. For the kids, 0 through 17, you can really see the darker colors on these maps indicate a higher proportionality of populations, higher, greater concentration from a percentage basis. This isn't sheer numbers because, again, some of the population in terms of total population is still concentrated along that I-35 corridor. One of the exceptions when you look at these slides is looking at median age. You can see it's more concentrated further west. And median income, the lighter areas indicate lower income. And you can see, again, the lowest income area on that red slide, a red map up here is concentrated to the southeast of Travis County. So dark on each one of these, you're looking at cost burden of households, households with public assistance, substandard housing units, and then households with no vehicle. Each one of these, you can see that there's a pattern emerging just by looking at the maps. For each one of these social factors or resource constraint factors, you're seeing it as it relates to a concentration eastward and southeast within Travis County. We look at various different factors in terms of accessibility services. Mobility is one of them, access to vehicles another one. From a health outcomes perspective, looking at substandard housing is important, similar to what Kristy indicated earlier with substandard housing. You know, infestations of cockroaches and other insects can lead to adverse health outcomes, so we're very sensitive to the ramifications of housing and living conditions folks are in. Looking at this slide, again, similarly following the trend, a busy slide, but you can take a look at the top left, that's the number of households that are receiving supplemental nutrition assistance programs. So those are individuals who have lower incomes that are either through state or federal, and mostly federal assistance, receiving assistance in order to meet their basic food needs. The right top is looking at kids, again, higher darker color means higher concentration. These are individual kids served through schools, through the free and reduced federal lunch programs. And so you can see a concentration emerging. Looking at areas of food deserts and lack of access to foods, you can see that we have concentration eastward within Travis County on the food desert slide, or map, I should say. And then also modified retail environments where there's no healthy foods, you can see that's concentrated eastward and southeast as well. So there's some very clear demographic information that's coming across that shows a pattern here. Down at the bottom, of course, we're most interested in looking at where the uninsured populations are concentrated, as well as taking a look at the Medicaid, which would be considered underinsured populations from the federal government's perspective. And again, the trend holds consistent. Most of this is things that you're very familiar with, given the demographic changes that have occurred over time and the displacement of individuals for housing and affordability reasons from the corridor of Austin outwards into the eastern region of the county at large. This slide demonstrates medical outcomes. And following similarly, some of the demographic resource maps that were on the two previous slides, you can see that when we look at just clinical preventative services as measured through the Behavioral Risk Factor Surveillance Survey, and this comes through the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention Foundation, and this unfortunately is only available currently at the census tract level within the largest cities, top 500 cities in the United States. Austin falls into that category. But it cuts off, when you look, you could see that it doesn't go all the way out through the total geography for Travis County. But you can see the trends here, the top left, when we look at women 65 years and older, darker is worse again. And so when we look at clinical preventative services, our women who are 65 and older are being screened at a lower rate than the rest of the area within Austin proper. Routine medical checks, 18 years and older, again, darker is worse. That's the top right. You can see that our adults 18 and older are less likely to have access to a physician. Medical check occurring on a regular basis based on that top right-hand side. Mammography use down at the bottom right, and then colorectal cancer screening, again, similarly for adults 50 through 70, 75, you can see that the trend is demonstrating that there's less of those screenings occurring the further eastward within the city of Austin that you go. So it's demonstrating access issues, disproportionate use of services, and so there's a lot of implications that we can garner out of this and make some assumptions based on other information that's filling in the gaps relative to that. So, you know, this is a lot of information that we're throwing at you, and so we want to simplify. One of the things that we're doing at Community Care is really looking at some national standards relative to how can you predict future modeling? And especially within Travis County, Austin, the community is so rapidly changing, as Mike indicated earlier. Geography is very important, and the geography health is critically important for us as a health center and as a community, as we look at how do we better address the needs of the folks that we're charged with serving. And so one of the things that we can look at as a predictor is looking at trends relative to poverty and looking at trends relative to high school attainment. So this slide here in red, the areas that are red are demonstrating areas geographically at the zip code census tract level that actually have incomes that, as a geography, a local geography, have penetration of poverty levels that are at 20% or above for poverty. And so the concentration of the population means that 20% or more of the population residing in those red areas have income levels below poverty. And then it also is coupled to a high school attainment level of less than 75%. And so high school graduation level coupled with the poverty level of 20%. So if you have less than 25 or more than 25% of your high school graduates by the age of 25, not having graduated, coupled with a population that has 20% or more residing at or below the poverty level, that's considered to be a vulnerable population. So the areas in red are definitely, are those areas. The area in purple is looking at graduation, and the yellow is looking at poverty levels. You can see just in the red areas, we're looking at a population of 194,000 individuals, of which below 200% of the poverty levels, 114,000 folks, just in the red areas on this map. So these are significant populations within our community at large that are in need of support and assistance. One of the things to indicate is that 23% of the individuals who reside in these red areas are linguistically isolated, which means that they speak English as a second language or don't speak English at all. And so that also speaks to the need potentially within the community. Looking at disproportionality relative to distribution of populations, this area in red, for the vulnerable footprint, populations footprint that we're demonstrating here, is disproportionately minorities, 67% of which are Hispanic Latinos residing in the red areas on the map. So kind of moving forward here, this one's, on the screen is very difficult. If you look at the print copy, it's a little bit easier to see potentially, but the outlined area in red is that vulnerable populations footprint from the previous two slides. In this case though, because we're showing percentages on a lot of these slides, it becomes important to go ahead and take a closer look at what number of folks are we really looking at? So when you look at this, it's tough. You've got to take your magnifying glass out, I apologize. But if you take a look, for example, looking towards the southeastern portion of the county, when we take a look at the number of individuals residing with incomes below 200%, you're looking at a 12,000, almost 12,500 individuals sitting in the Dell Valley Zip Code, which is 78617. And then when you look at the number of individuals in that zip code that are uninsured, you've got 6,209. Similarly, if you look in the Runburg area, you're looking at roughly 36,000 individuals who are at or below 200% of the federal poverty level and over 18,000 folks who are uninsured. You take a look at the Montopulos area, you're seeing similar numbers to that. What that means from a geography perspective, the reason why I bring up Runburg and Montopulos is we actually have two very large health centers there. Those individuals, I was not involved with that, but those individuals that planned for those two clinics must have seen that for those two clinics, uh, must have seen that that's where the concentration was. So those are very well-positioned clinics to serve, uh, a high-need population. And that's demonstrated by this vulnerable footprint. Now what we have to do, one of the challenges moving forward is figuring out, okay, the population's expanding, which is the next slide, and we know the population's expanding. One of the troubling things though that we've learned is, is while the population of Travis County as a whole is expanding, there's an erosion of folks who are below two-hundred percent, which, when I say that, is, is kind of misleading because that would be a positive thing, right? If you've got folks who are, uh, as a population are not as much below two-hundred percent, that's a very positive thing. But the reality is, is do we think that folks are ascending the income ladder or are folks actually being displaced from our county? And it's more than likely a combination of both, but the majority of folks is probably the latter. And we saw a very precipitous drop from two thousand fifteen down to two thousand sixteen. At the same time, the county went ahead and grew significantly. You can see that it's almost a four percentage drop from thirty-five point six two, that's the top red line at the top, down to twenty-six point eight six percent for those below two-hundred percent. Given that that's who we're charged to serve based on our federal status with, uh, Health and Human Services, we're sensitive to that changing demographic here in Travis County. Coupled to that, one of the challenges that we have is the fact that we have a rapidly changing population, the needs are expanding and growing. The bottom right graphic demonstrates that over the last five years, Community Care in, thanks to the support of the Board of Managers, Central Health and others, uh, have si- uh, we've grown significantly in terms of our ability to serve, almost sixty-six thousand folks served in two thousand twelve, now almost ninety-seven thousand folks in twenty sixteen. Tremendous growth. You're looking at the numbers through twenty sixteen. What we're seeing though, when we pull our own data, well, that's a growth of roughly about thirty-five, thirty-six percent in, uh, new patients served. In the intervening time, we've seen the disease burden for the folks that we're caring for grow in a higher rate. So the graphic representation down the bottom, the far blue line on each one of these, you can see the disease entities, the most rapidly growing diagnosis that we had from a percentage basis was almost sixty percent comparative of the population growth as a whole, sixty percent in hypertension. You can see growth in diabetes, heart disease. So what we're seeing is, is as we're adding and looking at our population as a whole, we're actually seeing this disease burden, chronic disease burden go ahead and actually, uh, play into this at a, a much more than anticipated rate, which has implications for the type of care and the models of care that we need to provide. So not only is this about the geography of care, but it's also about how do we transform the care delivery system to better than meet the demands and needs of a population that continues to evolve and to evolve very rapidly. So with that stated, that's it for my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you, Jason. Good morning and thank you everyone for coming out today. Um, today we are excited to present to you, uh, the second edition of the Central Health Demographic Report, uh, which we are planning to unveil officially tomorrow and everyone will be able to download off of our website and read the full report themselves. So the central demographic report is developed as a tool, uh, a tool to understand where our populations are living today and provide projections for what, uh, our county, Travis County, will look like in five years. Uh, we wanted to identify the highest concentrations of poverty and we wanted to develop a relationship for understanding where our patients live as well as where they're accessing care. And finally, we wanted to provide a comprehensive analysis of the needs of our population as it relates to access to healthcare, race, ethnicity, age and gender, and social determinants such as transportation and affordable housing. Um, to, to do all of this, we relied on a number of data sources. Um, for geography and mapping, we utilize census tract data of which there's, there's two hundred and seventeen census tracts within Travis County. So while they may not be familiar to the layperson, they do give us a very detailed ability to provide analysis on the local level. Uh, we also utilize zip codes, which are very familiar to those who have been in and around Austin for a while. Um, and we utilize those a lot when we're looking at patient data because we want to protect, uh, private information. We got our current information on population families as well as our protection, projections through Nielsen Pop Facts, which utilizes, uh, American Community Service data from the Census Bureau. And for our patient data, we utilize the Community Care Collaborative and Community Care Health Centers Analytics. And finally, we, um, leaned on our partners and our friends at the City of Austin Neighborhood Housing and Community Development to gather information on housing, affordable housing in and around Austin, Travis County, as well as CAP Metro for, uh, bus lines and public transportation. So as we, um, as Jason alluded to earlier, we as Central Health, um, focus on the population that is at two-hundred percent or below the federal poverty level. However, for our data, for the, our data capabilities were limited to, in that, in that portion of the population. So in this report, we primarily focused on those living at or below the federal poverty level, one-hundred percent. So we wanted to give you some perspective on what that means. To qualify as living at or below the federal poverty level, an income, or an individual is limited to twelve thousand two hundred and twenty-eight dollars in annual income. So what we're saying is if you make thirteen thousand dollars or a dollar over that, you would not be considered at or below FPL. For a family of four, this is twenty-four thousand five hundred and sixty-three dollars. There are currently one hundred and forty-four thousand six hundred and five residents who qualify for this status. So approximately one in ten Travis County residents, thirty-three thousand families, and sixty-seven thousand one hundred and twenty-one Central Health patients that we know of, that we can count qualifies at or below the federal poverty level. So the first part of this exercise was, um, I think maybe the most obvious, uh, gathering a comprehensive list of our providers and our provider network. This includes the hospitals we support, primary care clinics, urgent convenient care clinics, as well as our eligibility locations, of which we counted fifty-four of these throughout Travis County. And I should caveat this by saying there's dozens of other providers that we support that our patients see that are not included on this list. This includes palliative care, skilled nursing, and specialty care facilities. Additionally, once we gathered these providers, we overlaid our patient population, which are demonstrated by the different shades, the darker being higher concentrations of patients and the lighter being less. So similar to what Jason was showing earlier, you can see concentrations along the I thirty-five corridor and then increasing farther to the east in Travis County. And finally, as we looked at this, uh, looking at where we've got provider locations, where we've got patients, it's already starting to help us understand where we need to take our next steps and where we need to look at putting new facilities. Uh, this could be ranging from bricks and mortar locations to new and creative ways of delivering healthcare services, be it virtual, be it mobile, we're looking at all our options. So now we're back to, um, the census tract level. And the next step in this process was we wanted to understand and look at where the families are in Travis County, where are the concentrations? And you've got two maps here showing two very different things. On the left is the total families in Travis County. The darkest locations are where the highest concentrations of families are, the lighter are the lowest, lower concentrations. So if we're focusing on the left, we're total families, you're gonna see the highest concentrations now outside of the city of Austin. To the northwest, you've got Steiner Ranch. To the, uh, northeast, you've got Flugerville. And there to the southwest is the Circle C area. If we change it and think about and focus in on families living in poverty, we've got a much different story, which is what we have on the right. The highest, the darkest is where we've got the highest concentrations of poverty. As you can see, this starts to bring us back towards Austin. Um, we've got Runburg and Saint John's to the north. We've got the Colony Park, uh, census tract to the east, and then Montopolas and Dove Springs areas to the south and southeast. So now we're starting to look forward. So we underst- we, we drew a picture of where we are today. Now we wanted to see what, what might, what's, what we're projecting to change over the next five years. So if we look again the left at the blue circles, these are represented by the darker and larger the circle, the greater the increase. The lighter and smaller the circle, the smaller increase. So again, we're seeing what we saw on the previous slide where we had large numbers of families, the bigger getting bigger. So the greatest growth over the next five years we're projecting, Steiner Ranch, Valente, Cedar Park, and then Flugerville. So again, outside Austin, primarily to the northwest and the northeast. Then if we look to the right where we've, we're looking again at families in poverty, um, again, those larger darker circles are where we're gonna see the highest increases in families in poverty. So we've got Saint John's and Heritage Hills to the north, Flugerville, Dove Springs, Montopolas. And then we've got a new group joining us, which is the Hornsby Bend Census Tract, which I'm sure many of you are familiar with, to the east of Colony Park. So now we've looked, we've, we've built a understanding of where we are today and we looked at the projections of where we're gonna grow. It allowed us to analyze what things are gonna look like, what we're projecting things are going to look like five years from now, which is where this map starts to draw a picture for us. There's, as I mentioned earlier, about two hundred and sixteen census tracts in Travis County. This highlights the forty cents, the forty of those two hundred and cent, two hundred some census tracts where we are projecting to have the highest concentrations of poverty in twenty twenty-two. The dark red represent the highest level. Um, sixteen census tracts are counted amongst those dark red. Those will, we're projecting, those sixteen census tracts will encompass twenty-five percent of all the families in poverty in Travis County five years from now. Um, we also drilled down into what those meant and how we got there. There were some of those that were high today in twenty seventeen and as we showed with those circles, we expected them to have the highest increases, such as Saint John's, Colony Park, and the Montopolas. There were others that were high today, but they were going to ha- experience more moderate increases. They're by no means going to lose these high concentrations of poverty, but we are projecting the pat- the, the trend to slow. Those areas include Runburg and Franklin Park. And then we had other areas where there's more moderate levels of concentrations today in twenty seventeen, but we're projecting that the increase will be so rapid that they will graduate to the highest levels in five years. This includes Flugerville to the north and Hornsby Bend. In total, these forty census tracts represent less than twenty percent of all the census tracts in Travis County. However, we're projecting these forty will encompass one-half of all the families in poverty in five years. So knowing this, we really wanted to dive into these areas. So we grouped these census tracts into what we called focus areas. And we divided these by natural topic, topographical divides such as roads, uh, separating, for, for example, northeast Austin, I thirty-five separating northeast Austin, north central Austin, uh, water boundaries such as the Colorado River separating Dell Valley from the Hornsby Bend Colony Park area, and political boundaries such as Maynor being separate from Austin and Flugerville. So once we developed these nine focus areas, we really wanted to take it to the next step and look at all the social determinants and other factors that are facting the populations living in this area. First thing was obviously we need to map what access to healthcare services were in each area. Primary care services, hospital services, and urgent care, which are signified on these maps with the circles with the numbers in them. Um, next, we wanted to utilize the data we could access and figure out what sort of affordable housing resources were available to the populations in these areas. Um, and to be frank, it was disheartening to find the lack of affordable housing, um, that we could identify. I do want to caveat this as saying, when we are speaking about affordable housing, we're speaking specifically to the housing, the, the housing that is reserved for patients, for our patient population at or below a hundred percent of the poverty level. So they use different criterias in the affordable housing market, but I can roughly tell you, um, what they use is called MFI, Median Family Income. So to qualify for, if it's gonna be reserved for our pa- population, it would have to be about thirty to forty percent MFI, depending on the size of your family.
That's right.
So as I said, there's, what we discovered, what we could find out there was extremely limited. As I mentioned earlier, there were pro- over thirty-three thousand families living in poverty in Travis County. And for these thirty-three thousand families, we could find six hundred and sixty units reserved for them. Within these nine focus areas that we identified, we found one hundred and sixty-eight affordable housing units. And we don't even know the size of the, we couldn't get the information of what size those units are, so it could be a one-bedroom apartment, it could be a single-family home. Um, so within these nine focus areas, we had eighteen thousand of, uh, families in poverty, one hundred and sixty-eight affordable housing units for those eighteen thousand families. As well as of those nine focus areas, four of them had zero affordable housing units within them. Uh, I would highlight southeast Austin, which includes Montopolas and the Pleasant Valley neighborhoods, twenty-one hundred families living in poverty, not a single affordable housing unit. The next layer we wanted to, next piece of information we wanted to overlay with these focus areas was, uh, CAP Metro routes and access to affordable, or excuse me, um, public transportation. These are highlighted by the black arrowed lines you can see throughout. So as you can see through the contrast of these two maps, on the left, we have north central Austin. And I should caveat, these routes are, we only identified the ones that were regular or high-frequency. Um, CAP Metro does run some, um, routes that run maybe once in the morning, once at night. These are ones that are running regularly and can provide access to our health centers. Um, so on the left, you see north central Austin, it's the Runburg neighborhood. Um, and you can see there's a lot of, uh, routes cutting through those areas versus on the right where we get more rural, Colony Park, Hornsby Bend, we don't have that access to public transportation. So what we did further of course was break down the demographics of all these focus areas. And we started to see some trends. I'm not gonna go through all nine of them, but I wanted to give you a kind of a combined focus area summary and tell you what we saw. Um, the Hispanic Latino population was the largest in all nine of the focus areas and is twenty-six percent higher than the county rate. Only in Flugerville and Maynor did the Hispanic Latino population fall below fifty percent. Um, the white population was the second highest in seven of the nine focus areas, with the African-American population being second in Colony Park and Maynor.
What was that percentage? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry?
That percentage?
Nineteen point six for white.
Okay.
One interesting byproduct we did see, um, throughout Travis County, there is quite often usually a, 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 a majority population, majority Hispanic, majority white. Um, in two of our focus areas, Flugerville and Maynor, we actually discovered, um, high levels of diversity, particularly in Flugerville, where it was almost evenly split between, uh, white, African-American, and Hispanic residents, as well as it housed the highest percentage of Asian residents in the entire county. With age, so the rate in these focus areas, the rate of children age eighteen and younger is significantly higher than it is at the county at large, six pe- six percent higher than the county rate. Um, this of course comes at the expense of eighteen and above. Seniors in particular were much lower in these focus areas. The highest percentage of seniors in any of our focus areas was in East Austin, which is the area around, uh, Central Health Offices on Caesar Chavez. And the lowest was in southeast Austin, where it was just four point five percent. And that includes the Montopolas, um, neighborhoods. With genders, um, we were somewhat surprised, but the percentage of males was higher in the focus areas. Almost one per- the focus areas, almost 1% higher than the county rate, which even 1% can add up quite significantly, but as I'll show you later, that doesn't quite match with our patient population. And only in Maynor and Flugerville did, um, the feat was the female population the We also wanted to add another layer to the public access to transportation, which was looking at how many households within each census tract were without vehicles. This is important, especially as we look at these new rural communities that are developing to the east that don't have the access to public transportation. As it can show here, the average per census tract throughout Travis County is 123 house, households without access to a vehicle. That usually gets higher the closer you get to downtown Austin. The combined average within these focus areas was 188. Unfortunately, this trend followed the county. When we were usually the neighborhoods that were closer downtown who had more access to public transportation, the number was lower, or excuse me, higher. And as we went to Dell Valley or Flugerville, the number was lower. The one exception, the one standout that was concerning was Hornsby Bend. In Hornsby Bend, there was 151 households without access to a vehicle, and they had zero public transportation or cat metro bus routes. And again, we looked at the affordable housing, we developed a ratio. So what we're showing here is for every affordable housing unit throughout Travis County, there are 49 families living in poverty. However, in our nine focus areas, for every affordable housing unit, there's 99 families living in poverty. So this is the reverse of actually what we would expect or maybe hope to see, which is in the areas with the highest concentrations of poverty, there are less affordable housing The final part of this report focuses, comes back to focus on our patients and the demographics and what we can learn and understand of where they live and where they're treated. And then we can, what makes this so useful besides understanding their patterns of treatment and where they live, is we can overlay this now of what we understand, what we're projecting, where they live, to see if there's gaps between where we're accessing people and where we know they are. We looked at this in a multitude of ways. We looked at the overall demographics of our patient population, age, gender, race, ethnicity, marital status, and income. And then we also broke it down by chronic conditions, which is particularly important to us because patients with chronic conditions tend to be high utilizers. It's very important for us to identify and treat them and understand how we can help treat them better. According to our data, we've identified or diagnosed 32,188 patients with one or more chronic conditions within the last two years. This includes behavioral health, chronic lung disease, diabetes, heart failure, hypertension, cancer, and kidney failure. As I mentioned, we also looked at the gender of our population, um, patient population, and again, as you can see on this, just for this chronic condition, it's 56% female, which contrasts to what we know of the overall population in our focus areas, which is 51% male. So alluding to what I was saying earlier, we may not be capturing as many of the male patients as we would like to. As far as the age of our patients, 89% of them are, range from 18 to 65 versus six, what, so it's 89% of our patients versus what we know is 64% of the total residents fall in that age range. Along the bottom, those two graphs, which are a little bit hard to see here, this is where we under, we took a look at where the patients were actually being seen on the bottom left. UMC Brackenridge topped the list of every chronic condition on here, and I, I should caveat that, it's, that Brackenridge was a big campus, so it included the hospital, inpatient, outpatient, as well as a number of clinics on there. So it's not, not surprising to us to see that, there's a high utilization there. But we also found some important news through, and something we noticed throughout these chronic conditions throughout our care, which was very high utilization at our north central and our southeast health and wellness centers, which were designed, which were chosen to be in areas where we expected and we knew there was high need, and we're happy to see they are being utilized as we had designed them for. And further, there are locations on here, because this is 2016 data, which have moved operations to new locations, such as Brackenridge, such as Rosewood Zaragoza. So we're ver, we're looking forward to where this data will move in the next year and understanding where we're capturing and treating these patients now. And on the bottom right, this is where we, um, the graph depicting the zip codes from which those patients lived. One interesting one, which we saw pop up over and over, was the 78767, which is in downtown Austin, that's where the Art Clinic is. So I, we, a lot, from what we understand, a lot of the homeless, uh, are homeless patients who get treated there lists as their home zip code. So finally, just some high-level conclusions, um, you know, looking at where our population's living now, we're seeing high concentrations of families outside of Austin's core, to the northwest and that Steiner Ranch area, as well as the uniqueness of what's going on in Flugerville, where we've got the highest number of total families, we've got a very high number of families living in poverty, and we've got incredible diversity. It's the number one population of African-American families, the number one highest not, total population of Asian families, and it's number two for the total number of Hispanic families. We see this, uh, I'm sure many of you have heard the term eastern crescent, and we're seeing the, the development of this, this eastern crescent away from downtown Austin, new concentrations of poverty developing in Flugerville, Colony Park, Hornsby Bend, Dell Valley. And finally, um, we also can reinforce, although we are seeing this eastern crescent develop, we're not seeing the, the I-35 corridor and the needs along that corridor disappear. We, today, and we're still projecting in five years, we're going to have to work hard to meet the needs of those communities along the corridor, which includes Runberg, St. John's, Metropolis, Pleasant Valley, and Dove Springs. So thank you, and I will turn it back to Mike.
Thank you. So this last slide is, captures some of the common themes that I, I think have already been discussed that fall into three main categories, which is the growth and the movement, the equity and the health impact, and the social determinants of health. So Madam Chair, our, our next task over the next few months is to use this information, and you'll see us reference each of these reports from time to time or all at once, to start putting together the building blocks for the healthcare delivery strategy, which will then obviously be part of the full board's work in developing the 2019 budget, so that we're budgeting for a strategy that has the healthcare delivery in mind for the patients. So that's the ultimate goal here, and we appreciate the, the committee's indulgence today to work through these presentations and to allow us to present this information.
Thank you, and I certainly want to thank anyone and everyone who's here or not present, who's been working so hard on this data. I appreciate the hard work and the diligence and the speed at which you've been working. This was some, something that I and others had specifically requested, that we, that we have this type of data to work from, because we have, we, we see things, we hear things, we have feelings about where needs may be, but that doesn't give us the data to make our decisions on the data about what's happening, not just now, but we have to look when we're making investments of what we're going to be seeing five, 10, you know, years out, and if we had crystal walls, even further, but it gets very difficult to be making those, that strategic planning and those decisions on, on infrastructure, on types of service delivery, not all of which is infrastructure-based, and how we meet the needs of the, the different types of people that we've seen. If I could ask very quickly, we have some people who have joined us up here at the table, if you could just give your, your name and, uh, you're with?
That is a bit is wisely, uh, and I'm a health champion.
And thank you for being here. Yes, I know, thank you for being that, part of that program.
Joe Davis Fleming, I'm also a, um, community health champion.
And thank you for your work, yes.
You're welcome.
Hermione Amagutri, Travis County Health and Human Services.
Thank you.
Debbie Laffler, I'm a, a board member of Community Care.
Thank you.
Rachel Chorong, I'm with Central Health.
Right, thank you, and I know we have others who are.
Sherry.
Yes?
Gus Pena, president of a, a big military organization, and I just wanted to let you know there's a lot of healthcare issues, and I'm glad everybody's participating. Veterans for Progress, born in 20, 2013 because of the, the issues at.
Right.
The, the, um, local hospitals and clinics are taking care of my veterans, but we're 7,522 strong, and thank you for the collaboration. And I know Mr. Geisland and, and Fornia know about our organization, and we're growing bigger, both female also, we're here to help out, and I grew up in East Austin without healthcare insurance, and now I feel it, but anyway, thank you very much.
Well, thank you for being here, and, and, um, I appreciate you coming up, because I was next going to say, I, I want to recognize those who are here in the audience with us and those who may be not here physically but participating with us, so thank you to everyone. If I may, I had just a few questions to start with, and then we'll, we'll open it, if that's fine, to questions from other board members and others. Uh, so I had a few informational questions. Uh, there were some slides, and I tried to turn back the pages, on pages 19 and 21 in the Community Care Presentation. And is this information available online where we can see these maps in a larger version?
Not yet.
But, coming soon to a station near you.
Coming soon, yes.
Okay. Do we have any kind of ETA, estimated time of arrival for those?
Uh, probably, um, late December or early January.
Okay, wonderful, thank you. Uh, so, um, it would be helpful, I think, to me to not just have percentages and percentage growth, but also the raw numbers. And so I saw that on page 19 and on page 21, but on several pages, we're having the percentage was very helpful, we're seeing the percent change or the percent growth, but I would also like to have the raw numbers, because as you said, it, it is important to see the percent change or the percent growth, but that doesn't tell us the overall numbers, um, because the numbers still may be higher, and we know they are in some of these categories, even though other categories have had a higher growth rate. So if we could see, um, the, the, you know, the, the actual numbers too, in addition to that.
We, the full report actually has tables that.
I imagined it would.
So.
I imagined it would.
You'll absolutely see that.
Just, just, just making sure.
Absolutely, thanks for that feedback.
And then, uh, when we, when we get to, um, uh, the, uh, report from JP, and again, thank you, um, for your hard work, those of your staff, and also JP for your hard work, and of course, um, our, our child report and our Region 7. If, if we turn to JP, to the information that you presented, and, and again, thank you for the, I know that this is, takes a lot of time. I do want to caution us on, and I'll actually, um, I think turn to, to Mike on this one. Mike, I want to caution us on what we're calling affordable housing and how we're presenting that, and, um, I'm, I'm not comfortable with that, and so I think we need to, to, either word it differently or provide more information, because my understanding is that what you are representing here are those units that are subsidized for those at 30% MFI or below, correct?
Correct.
And are those, um, include units that the Housing Authority, the City of Austin, has, which is not the city, but HACA, um, potentially City of Austin, um, I would assume also potentially those who, and this is what I don't know, who may have accessed some of the GO bonds that the City of Austin has, such as Foundation Communities and many others who have, um, housing developments where they have reserved a certain number of units, not all, sometimes all, but sometimes just a portion for those at 30%. Is that reflected in here too?
To the best we could, Sherry, and I would caveat, and I apologize for not mentioning this, but when it comes to things such as affordable housing, we would like to use this report as a, a tool to outreach and collect more information with these partners, because.
Well.
We have, what we discovered going into this is, and what everyone we spoke to told us when it came to affordable housing, it was, there was no unification.
So there is an effort underway that I happen to know of, because I'm involved in it professionally, and that is, it's an effort underway with, um, um, myself, both as an academic and as a member of Austin City Up, which is a community consortium, um, Neighborhood Housing, Community Development, City of Austin, and HACA. And the effort is, in fact, to get all of this data into one database, because it's very disparate, so. And I found this out naively a couple of years ago when I asked for it from, um, the, the City of Austin, from Neighborhood Housing, and they said, well, we can give you a database that has, you know, what we have, but we don't have all. And I said, really? And then I thought, well, of course you don't, because you don't, you're, you don't have dominion over all of it, right? And so what we're, this project is trying to gather everything from whether it's HACA or City of Austin or, um, uh, nonprofits, and looking at 30% to 120% MFI. So some of this will be what we call naturally occurring affordable housing, those class C and D units. So I, I'm, I just would not be comfortable in a report with the terminology affordable housing and just looking at what may or may not even be all of the units and all the units at, at solely 30% MFI without looking at some that may be serving those at 50 or 60%, perhaps at Miller and other places. So Mike, I think we, we need to just be careful.
Duly noted, and we can go back and not only look at the definitions or perhaps the titles on those couple of slides, but.
Right.
Put the necessary caveats around it to say, here's what this includes or does not include.
We, we.
And then as this gets revised, we can, we can update it.
Yes, we, we, we made sure to footnote exactly what we were speaking of, and I.
But even in the title, I wouldn't just call it affordable housing. I would be very specific. Is this, you know, subsidized housing at 30% MFI? What is this? Because to just in a title, call it affordable housing, a lot of people aren't going to look at the footnotes, and I think it's going to be confusing, and they may think that, you know, we have improper information or something like that. And you may want to allude to that this is a iterative, growing, organic process that we're working on others in the community with to, to get a fuller database, but I think we need to, to refine the titles to.
And I'd like to just add to that in saying that, uh, as we do that, the importance for, for us to look at all of these issues, especially housing and transportation, is because we're targeting our population. Our population is 200 and below FPL, and what services and, and resources are available to them. Yes, we can go up to 120 and see that those people are outside our targeted population, but with respect to delineating and aggregating the information.
Right.
Regarding resources, we need to be able to concentrate on our targeted population, that we're here to serve as Central Health Board of Managers and Community Care and its providers, uh, the population.
Of course.
And so we want to know what our resources are for our population.
Right.
So as we determine whether the best locations and what services will be provided, they will go to a map that shows where the disparities exist, the deserts exist, and where they're, where, where we are currently providing services, and that is sometimes way outside of the population and location of need. Thank you.
Right, absolutely.
I just wanted to speak to that. Thank you, Cynthia. Uh, this report actually does that, that's what we did.
Right.
We only included the, those units that are available at 30% MFI.
Exactly.
We actually created a methodology to try to match up.
Right.
The income level of our targeted population with the methodology that's used.
Exactly.
In housing, and just only include those units that would be available for our covered population.
Well, then that brings up one more question, because when, I think it was, uh, JP, when you were talking about the housing or the, or maybe it was you, Kristi, when you were talking specifically about affordable housing, that was experiencing, uh, maintenance problems, uh, uh, health problems, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, I did not see where we were designating that those were actually in HACA units or subsidized housing units as opposed to landlord or absentee landlord units. And to me, that's an important distinction that we need to take care of and include here. So we separate what is government-owned property and what is not government-owned property, and how the maintenance issues are being addressed by those that are in charge or those that are absentee. Thank you.
And, and if I can just add, yes, exactly, and that's why, as I was saying, we need to, we need to be specific with our wording to say, not just affordable housing, but 30% subsidized, even, even just on maps, we can't just, or on charge, can't just say affordable housing. People will not read those footnotes and know the methodology that we have done. And beyond that, to be, to have in their wording to say. to say that we're not necessarily being all-inclusive to everything that is available to our clients, much of which is substandard landlord housing and substandard rental units that is, quote, "naturally occurring affordable housing."
So, we'll go back and take a look at these titles and work with this before we publish it, and then again, as these data sets start to coalesce and come together, you may see one or more revisions beyond this.
Of course.
I think our hope was for this report was to begin these kinds of conversations across sectors and with different organizations that are working on different aspects of the issue that we have not yet had at a robust level.
Which is great.
And that's the purpose of this, is to generate this type of conversation, and hopefully, generate better data and information so that we can understand what's going on and the needs, and address both programs and policies to better address those needs.
And I applaud this effort and this work. It is really terrific. I just want to make sure that when people who are not immersed in it in the way we are read this or just look at wording on a chart, that they're not misled.
Additionally, with respect to the addition of necessary information, to be able to get a context for this data that we're providing, we also like, as we're talking about, such as the development that's occurring in Colony Bend, that's being developed right now, the plans that the City of Austin is putting forth, the plans that are coming forth with respect to all the other resources that are going to be made available within a very short period of time, those plans of ongoing development that are going to provide resources, additional resources that exist that show them to be a desert right now, would not be within three to five years, because that development is going to be occurring almost immediately. And so, those plans need to be attached here so that we can get a real perspective for where we need to be in five years, because we will be incorporating the additions by other governmental and private development entities who are putting forth plans that are going to look at a holistic approach to a community, and that includes retail, commercial, medical, et cetera, et cetera, within their development. Thank you.
Cynthia, whenever you refer to those plans, you're referring to the actual development plans or plans.
Yes, that are ongoing right now and that are being developed right now, that are going to address specific areas that we have targeted in our focus, and like, such as in Colony Bend. I mean, Colony Park, which is going to have this huge development that's going to include retail, commercial, affordable, not affordable, medical clinics, et cetera, et cetera, that are all going to be put there that go to the count, as far as I'm concerned, that go to the count of resources available in a particular targeted area, so that when I read something like this and I look for managing dollars to needed areas, it won't be in an area that I know is already going to be included in a plan that is being implemented right now. I can go to what, where there is no development plan, where there are no resources being looked at being developed or put in those areas, and we know that that is a greatest need. So, that helps us to have a context for what we are doing and what we are supposed to do, and how we locate and spend dollars to address the disparities.
An example of that, that Cynthia was alluding to, is the Colony Park area the City of Austin has, and you can go to the City of Austin website and see there's an RFP or RFQ out for development in that area. And so, that's what Cynthia was alluding to. And I think that's really what Kristi was saying, is that this is an effort that I applaud for us to collaborate with others. It's going to be ongoing, it's going to be organic and iterative as things are changing, and it may be that in the future, with the help of others, that there could be a way from websites to link directly to these other opportunities or developments as they're occurring. But that will be an ongoing process.
I mean, not only Central Health, but other organizations are basically chasing, I want to say chasing, and trying to set up services because of this movement, this rapid movement. And I think we need to try to get ahead of and think to the future and plan more extensively together so that we're not left just, you know, trying to respond to... Because we have created, we've made decisions as bodies, I'm not saying Central Health, but as a community, you know, as our bodies, on how this is rolling out and the future of our community. So, it gives us an opportunity.
Yes, thank you.
I will have to thank all of you all for providing this data, and I want to tell you each, each and every one of you, that this confirms exactly what has been stated by other organizations, including Latino Healthcare Forum and its founders, for at least seven or eight years, and the need to collaborate with other governmental entities to address the social determinants of health, because they were the ones that were throwing those words around way back when, because I was throwing them around when I came to speak before the body that I am now a part of. And so, thank you very much. And is, when is it that we're going to be allowed to ask additional information with respect to this?
Well, I think Marom has a question, and then I'll get, see if there are any others, and I'll come back to you. Is that okay, Cynthia?
Yes, and the public, because I like to have, make sure that we have their input also.
We will, we will. Marom?
Well, thank you. Thank you all for this report, and I believe without data, we're actually nowhere, and this can provide a framework where we need to head. What I really want, my... It's not a question, more of a highlight for the community, to where our services are and then how we are, to our population, what we, the expectations to improve their health outcomes. For us, it's not just any longer just providing clinics and care. The needs for our community, our population that we're serving, is beyond clinics, is housing and transportation, where Kristi, as you highlighted, the solution is beyond us. It's including private, public, and local entities to really solve it and partnering with them. And I think these are discussions that we will move forward with, because we owe it to our population and bridging both public health and healthcare, because that's the only way we can really improve the health of our community. Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you. Yes, please.
So, thank you all. I saw your presentations flowed beautifully. You were in good communication with each other, I can see, because you started the social determinants discussion, and you ended it really well with the housing. In regards to the housing, one of the things that we've noted at times is that families actually share houses, so each family has a bedroom. So, sometimes that even is an understatement of the issue, right? Right, exactly. But Jason, I think this is the first time ever I've heard about the fact that the last designation of the MUAs in Travis County was in 1994. And seeing all the other counties that already have the whole county designated, what does it, what do we need to do as residents of Travis County to push for the whole county to be designated as such?
And thank you. That just took one of my questions, too. So, great.
Mine.
Sure, so the quick answer is, is we need to work with the state to go ahead and have this updated. And what I've been informed is, is the state doesn't have the capacity to do it. So, at the local level, we need to actually present the information, demonstrate that there's change in the medical underserved area, and what that means. And this has implications at a functional level for us, because our ability to draw in clinicians who have opportunities for loan repayment at the federal level are almost nonexistent, because this has not been updated in so long.
So, you say that the state does not have the resources, and I assume you mean that the state agency?
Correct.
Right, and that we would need to provide the data. We, meaning Central Health and Community Care?
The community at large, but we're taking it on at Community Care with our partners.
Right, I mean, given that we are the FQHC that we're discussing. So, the process would be that we would present the data to the state agency? How does this happen?
We would. The biggest challenge for the state, where they don't have the bandwidth, is actually measuring physicians that are accepting Medicaid patients. And that's why it's more challenging if you don't actually do a deeper dive into that. On paper, it looks like there's a lot of physicians that are serving the Medicaid population, but in reality, that tends to be a lot less.
Right.
And so, that's where the deeper dive will have to go with this moving forward.
And what we will need to do, and then present to the state agency, who can then take it from there, and with the end goal being to get the governor to designate?
More than likely, just to work with the federal government to update the designation.
To get the federal government, not the governor. Okay.
One more thing, Jason, with respect to that, as you're doing the identification on the physicians that are taking Medicaid only, as they are so few now, because of the slow reimbursement rate by the state, but we are seeing that there's an increase in those that are actually taking the Medicare. And many of our families, where my daughter is one of them, many of our families that have patients that fit in that, living below the poverty guideline due to medical illness and other issues, they will have doctors who will take them who serve Medicare. And we are blended... She's a blended person, in that she has both access to Medicaid and Medicare. And whereas a doctor may not take the Medicaid, they will take the Medicare. And so, we can go around that barrier to get access to services, and that's what people in the community need to realize, that there are doctors that will take the Medicare as opposed to the Medicaid.
Yes, along those same lines, when looking at the number of physicians or providers available to our population, I would be careful about even drilling down a little bit more, because you do have, you may have a certain number of doctors, but I would also pose the question, how many are currently accepting new patients? And this becomes especially critical when you're talking about Medicaid and uninsured folks. As you know, from all of our experience, we see that it is much more difficult to get an appointment as a new patient, because those slots are much more limited, as opposed to if you're already currently established. So, I think it would be interesting to study that aspect of access to primary care and other healthcare services.
Very well stated. That is actually a measure that we monitor at Community Care very closely. So, it can tell you for an adult patient who's seeking care with us right now, it's roughly about forty-eight days out before we're able to serve. The reality is, is that there's more demand for primary care within the community than that the safety net, as it's currently comprised, is able to meet. And so, when we look at that, that's why we see folks having to use urgent care or emergency rooms. But with that stated, when you look at this across the country, Travis County and Austin are... We're actually doing very well relative to our uninsured and Medicaid population. With that stated, there are certainly a lot of opportunity for improvement there with all of our partners. So, it's a great, great point you made, Joe.
I'd like to add to that, too. Community Care is making a concerted effort to increase the number and types of providers, so that more individuals can be seen, for example, by a nurse practitioner or other levels of providers that expand that physician's reach. And I think that's a really important strategy, and I'm so excited to see that you all are embracing that in a more robust way in the next year or so.
Yeah. Thank you for your question. Yes, ma'am.
I have three, but they're short. I do want to thank you, because these slides will help me. I have three groups that I represent, basically. LULAC is one of them. I also belong to a group called the Texas Alliance for Retired Americans, and it's basically a labor retired group. And then, the Houna Democrats, which is full of elected officials as membership, and so, I have to report to them every so often. So, I have three different type of questions. I noticed on slide eleven, the increase of chlamydia and gonorrhea in Travis County. It doesn't tell us why, and I'm just wondering, is it because we have so many colleges in the area, and there's a large number of youth? And I don't know if I saw anything about ages of the people that were getting those things. And the only reason I ask that is because that is how we would focus on how to try to curb that. And you would think that as much as that is on TV and movies and television, that that number would be so much lower. It's amazing to me that those figures are increasing.
Right. You know, we can't really dig into why at this high-level county data, but I think all of that kind of contextual information we can bring that at discussion would help. We don't have universities and large populations of younger people out in Bastrop and Caldwell Counties, however, and seeing that significant growth, the growth rate much higher than it is even here in Travis, would give some, you know, we would have more to think about as what's causing that rise. I do know that nationally, STI rates are increasing, so this isn't just unique to our community. But, you know, sort of the why is difficult to arrive at, but it is a growing problem across the country, not just here.
Well, I think that because you serve Travis County, I mean, we serve Travis County. It, I think that the college is probably a factor, a college is, but I think it would be important to try to find out, maybe there's another type of survey that can be done to find out. I know with all the different rules about medical information, maybe there's generic information that you can get, because I think it would help, because it's just alarming to me that it just keeps increasing. And I would think that some of them are eligible for your services. Slide thirteen, I totally agree with you as to the cost of co-pays for those who are even insured. I have a daughter who's insured, and I don't care how many times I say, "Go and, you know, do that." It's a sixty-dollar, and I say, "I will pay it. Just go." And I can imagine if in my household, where it is affordable, and between her and I, we can clearly pay for our medical expenses, and I'm somebody unique that has had insurance since I was two years old, all my life. It wasn't until I turned sixty-five and I went to Medicare, which still frightens me. I was always secure with very, very good insurance, either my father's or husband's or mine. So, that is clearly a major reason why people don't seek care, because it ends up getting worse. But I never hear anything about pharmaceutical issues. Are those also covered by Central Health for your eligible patients? Because I never hear any kind of report on that, and it would have been nice to know, because the cost of medicines is phenomenal.
And I think my connection, that we do that, and we have reports, different reports that...
Right. Well, and through the Community Care clinics and the pharmacy programs that we have there and other FQHCs, we're able to address a lot of that problem, but I'll defer to Jason to add additional details.
Yeah, so part of our assessment actually looked at pharmacy accessibility, and the slide wasn't put into this particular presentation, but there is a lack of pharmacy access that really follows that eastern, southeastern corridor. And so, there's a deficit of services and availability. So, access to life-sustaining medications critically important as primary care, and so, we're working very diligently with our partners to ensure, both through Central Health, the Community Care Collaborative, and others, to make sure folks have access to those medications. As a federally qualified health center, we're able to provide medications to our patients at a significantly discounted rate for those who are uninsured as well, because we gain access to 340B federal drug pricing program.
Does that also include having somewhere for them to get medicines? Because I know the lower the income you have, the less accessibility of cars. It's hard for you to get medicine sometimes before ten o'clock at night, you know? And I wonder, is there anywhere for them to go after ten o'clock at night?
So, we have contracted pharmacies that we work with, HEB and others, that our patients are able to go ahead and pick up their medications at. We also have through Southeast Health and Wellness, we have a central pharmacy there for our patients currently. And we're investigating whether or not we can expand services for lower-income individuals that are not Community Care patients as well currently.
And my last question. I noticed on several slides, you talk about the number of people that you guys serviced, and the last figure I heard was ninety-two, four-one-one, served, I'm sorry, of eligible patients. What happened to the rest of them? How many more are they? Are they not, why are they not coming? Why do you think they're not coming?
So, that number is just Community Care's on duplicate accounts. So, there's other partners within the community, People's Community Clinic, Regina's here, as well as Sloan Star, the Seaton Clinic, El Buena. And so, when you look in totality across the safety net providers, there's quite a few more individuals being served. I think JP's slide indicated for those at or below a hundred percent. Sixty-seven thousand out of a hundred and forty-four thousand individuals or so were being served through Central Health Resources. So, there's a gap there. But the other part that we struggle with, and all we'll struggle with, is not everyone needs access to primary care every year. And so, you know, if you looked at a hundred and forty-four thousand individuals under, at or below a hundred percent, how many folks actually have an ongoing need for primary care? We make assumptions, like a third of the population is the walking well, maybe higher, then they're not going to avail themselves of services as regularly. Those that have chronic disease processes, a diabetic, we're seeing on average anywhere from three and a half to four and a half visits a year. Someone who has HIV more frequently, potentially, if it's, if they're not, their viral load is not controlled. And so, there's a whole bunch of variables that go into it, but I think there's pretty good penetration overall. If you did the math on that for the hundred percent, I'd say probably... If you did the math on that for the 100%, I'd say probably about 60% or so of the eligible population is being served, and you're gapped above 40. But those are my opinions, assumptions relative to it.
So I'm glad you brought this up. And Mike, I'd like to ask you and JP and others to make sure, this can be very confusing. Community care is only one of the clinics that is within what I will call the central health family or enterprise. It is our clinic, but we contract with and through our budget, are funding services with other clinics, whether it's Peoples or Al Buon and many others. And so I think that it's very important that we make clear the total number of people that central health is serving versus a single, and very important and large clinic, but a single clinic. So I'm going to address this to Mike. How can we make sure, and perhaps to JP in your report, that this information is getting out in a way that people understand it?
I appreciate that.
Sure.
And duly noted, and we appreciate that. Probably after the first of the year, when we start pulling together the service report data, typically that's presented in a board meeting in terms of just a presentation, but we're going to start incorporating more of that into our annual report structure. So you'll be able to see, so for example, last fiscal year was 143,000 plus people, unique patients that we served in total. And then again, for future annual reports, we'll break that down for you so you can see exactly, you know, where they receive their care, what type or what level of care it was, hospitalizations, et cetera, ER admissions. A lot of these data sets that we have, they're, some are a little rough around the edges, just to be frank about it, and need more refinement over the years, but that's one of our tasks in terms of being more precise in our data reporting, is breaking this down in a way so that you can see what dollars were spent treating which people for which types of care.
And the goal would be in the future to get to that precise level and to have it in the annual report and to have it online on our website where anyone can access it. Is that correct, Mike?
That's correct, yes, as our current annual reports are.
Yes, yes. And I know JP's working on that. Thank you.
I just want to quickly say one last thing, not a question. The other reason is because I live in West Austin and I belong to a group called O'Wanna, the Old West Austin Neighborhood Association. And I live in precinct 250, which is either first or second highest voting in Travis County, always. And folks there say, oh, my God, why are we paying so much taxes? And I won't share what my tax costs, but they're phenomenal. But I, you know, I stay there because I like the community and I own my home. But that is a big question in that neighborhood because as all the figures showed, we get absolutely no one there probably using your services but paying huge taxes. So I always say, just pay them. You know, it's kind of like shut up and just pay them because it's our duty. We have more income and, you know, it's our responsibility. But in the same sense, you got to have something to say to them every time you show up on the tax increase.
So we are aware of the need for information, and we want to provide as much information and be as transparent as we can to all of the public, whether they're renters, homeowners, taxpayers. And what we have found is that there are people who are not directly using our services but who may know people who are. You'd be surprised, the number of neighbors you have who maybe are contractors and whatnot. But we have a community education initiative underway. Mike, you might want to address that.
Certainly. We have put information out there to talk both at a high level, but then also just through the reports that we provide and the information to get down to granular level as possible. So however you want to approach this, at a very high level or very detailed level, we're doing more to push more information out there. But as an overall response to your comment, first of all, I appreciate that, but we don't take the tax burden lightly in Travis County. And we don't rest just because we're the lowest of all the tax burdens when you compare us to the school district, the county and the city. You know, that's not good enough for us, but that's precisely why we're doing this right here, is to make sure that when we do spend those dollars, we are as absolutely effective as we can be at delivering the best possible care to people that are lower-resourced and don't have the means to be able to pull it together themselves. And I can make the economic argument for that, about why to do that. I mean, it's healthy economically to have a healthy population, but I prefer to make the more humane argument, which is it is absolutely the right thing to do.
Thank you, Mike. Ma'am, I believe you had a question?
Yeah, I have a couple and some more information.
Great, thank you.
Woo. Okay, how do we reach the people that their fixed income is like $560 to $800 a month?
That's right.
And they're Section 8, that's according and, but you know, let alone getting food and having food, keeping the heat on, having to figure a way to turn your lights on and all that, and those that are moving eastward, selling their homes less than property value. And they probably already know about Capital Metro, they're changing their bus route completely. Like I'm on 37, it goes to three grocery stores, it goes to one of the walking community cares clinics, and it goes downtown. It's going to go from east to west. Well, anyway. Also, the political health issues, how is that going to affect our strategies? The new stuff that, I won't say the name, wants to come out. Thank you.
So a suggestion I might make is that the City of Austin has a regional affordability committee that is chaired by City Councilmember Delia Garza. I happen to be the representative from central health on that. And it's really, that committee is tasked with the cornucopia of issues that you brought up as far as overall affordability. And I would, I think it would be wonderful if you could contact Councilmember Garza's office and perhaps come to one of the meetings of the regional affordability committee. Thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am? Yes, please.
I'm Lucy Carroll, I'm from Councilmember Flanagan's office. I am just curious, something that Sherri kind of made me think about is expanding the data and including all populations in this study. One huge vulnerable population that is not really included in this is the LGBTQ community. And I'm just curious about getting, what would it take for the survey to include something with like just a box on sexual orientation or even expanding gender beyond just male and female?
That's right.
So, that's all.
I can address that. So, you know, we take the, first of all, excellent question. So we take the threshold of 200% FPL because, you know, that's our target population, and a lot of that is consistent with what the statutory mission is for federally qualified healthcare centers. Now, to look at subsets of that population absolutely, whether it's LGBTQ or any other type of self-identifying or identifying information, I think is, if there's a database out there, that as long as we can pull that in and match it up and it's consistent, then certainly we could add more layers to this.
But this would be a good opportunity to get the population within that realm to make sure that that is included in all the data provided by all the government entities.
I think we have another question. Yes, sir.
Yeah, good morning. Gus Penney, can you hear me?
Yes.
I grew up on East Austin, 2327 East Fifth Street, president of Veterans for Progress. What I want to say is this, is that, and I thank everyone that is here, and Mike, you know me very well, I was here to support y'all here at City of Austin, but I have seen, my wife has community care or central health. The issue is this, is that we, sometimes she has to wait three months. But they say, call every day and maybe somebody will not appear for their appointment, number one. Number two, you got great individual, but you have some individuals over there who shouldn't be working over there. I'm a former EEO Discrimination Complaints Investigator for the feds. I don't appreciate people being mistreated like that, that they're there for treatment, not for mistreatment. Another thing also is this, is that what I would like to see, I have a sister who is a nurse, and you know, Mike, you know her, and also you know her too, Mr. Fournier, that the issue is this, make sure that the staff is being treated properly and respectfully. They're hard workers, they deserve better treatment. Now, again, I grew up in East Austin, 2327 East Fifth Street, in front of a tank farm, before the tank farm in Springdale Road was there. We have cancers, okay? I have prostate, I'm going to say it, I'm going to have prostate and colon issues that the military didn't even triage until I went to a private doctor. So that's why a lot of my veterans will not go to the VA, and sometimes they'll tell you at the clinic, say, oh, you don't qualify because you have VA. The heck with that. We don't want to go down and be misdiagnosed at the VA, and it's happening daily, especially to my female veterans. I'm a strong supporter of female rights. You know me, Sherri. I fought for the women to be respected and loved. But the issue is this, is we're getting fractured services sometimes. We can't allow that to occur anymore. We see people say, oh, eff it, I'm going to go to the hospital. Well, you could go to the clinic, but you know, they don't have time for three months, two months, or even a month. They could be catastrophically ill, die of it. Transportation, Mike, you and Mr. Fournier, all y'all don't know what I've been doing in the background as far as improving transportation at Capital Metro. I went to all the board meetings, and the 37, you're right, the 37, they fractured it as well as the number seven and 331 and 21 that goes to RBJ. We need to work, if you want a person to be medically sound, it's just not the healthcare, it's transportation lack thereof. Sherri, I love you because you've been on the forefront, you know what I've been fighting for, you know, you've been our friend for a long time. Folks, we got to work at a, one issue instead of fragmented issues, okay? We got to hit the city council, the county commission court, the ledge. I ran for city council twice and justice of the peace, and nearly elected to be justice of the peace, but the issue is this, it's going to take more than me, it's going to take more than my group of veterans that want to help out, and some of them, they're combat veterans, they don't have the time, they don't have the health to do that, but they're out there, God bless America for our veterans. But the issue is this, you know what? I'll die for the veterans, I'll die for the poor people that are not being, that are underinsured and not treated properly and not having the services properly. We don't want fractured services. So what I want to ask y'all is to not do a study, I'm sick and tired of studies, you know, throughout my life, even Bruce Todd, they talked about affordable housing. My spiel and question to, rhetoric to that was define affordable housing. What's affordable for y'all is not affordable for me or my veterans. We have to have a true-cut definition of affordability like Sherri said, and thank you, Sherri. So what I'm saying is this, let's cut out the fragmented services, get a complete overhaul, study it, but does a study it, do take action on where we need to improve the quality of healthcare for the people and not see them die or get catastrophically ill, especially my veterans, because they will not go to temple, we don't want to die of infections over there, and we sure as heck don't want to die here in Austin to the clinics, wait for three months for an appointment, and disrespect.
Thank you, we appreciate your comments.
I want to thank y'all very much, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your comments. Anyone else?
Okay, I just have one last question. With respect to some of the questions on this particular presentation that you made today that I didn't really get to bring forth, are we going to have another presentation made to us formally at the central health board or the strategic planning committee meeting that we can't, that I can bring forth this and make sure that some of the data provided is either disaggregated better or maybe it's in a completed report that will be provided later on? Do I just present these questions to you?
So as I noted, we will be having another meeting, the strategic planning committee on December 18th, and I'm sure you can also speak with Mr. Geisler about questions.
So the complete reports will be available online with the aforementioned revisions that will go back, that we picked up here today, or at least caveats with commitments to revise them, you know, soon in the future. As far as this, as far as coming back to the full board, I would consider this, ultimately we serve at the pleasure of the board, and if the full board wants to see these presentations again or in greater detail, we can certainly get that on the agenda. This information is also working information. It's not just a study for the sake of study. This is actually going to start driving our next round of plan revisions to see what our healthcare delivery strategy is. So you'll continue to see bits and pieces of this over the next several months as we build up.
The reason I'm asking is because I've made some notations on some data that was provided that was not broken down by race or ethnicity that I believe needs to be. And in order to get a truer picture and for the development of strategies that we need to look at incorporating amongst ourselves as an agency and also in recommending to our providers, that, you know, one of them being that they hire culturally competent staff.
So if you'll circle back with me offline, and we can go over each one of those notations you have and work that in.
Yes, and also to Jason, if you don't mind, because I've got several things on your report that I'm sure you probably have already incorporated, I want to make sure that you look at that, if you haven't done that deep dive.
Yes, he has a robust report, so I think, yes, it would be most expeditious. Cindy, if you could, if you don't mind, get with JP and Mike separately, then they can directly.
And to Jason.
And to Jason, yes, and to Jason, of course.
This is really a framework.
It is.
No, that's exactly right.
It's organic. It is, it is an organic.
This is something that we've been asking for since we came on the board, and I really appreciate that. And Jason, to you, I have to applaud you for taking the initiative to do this CHA, which is a long time coming.
No, 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 no.
I'm sorry, not, not, no.
The community care data.
Community care data. We were asking for this for many, many years, and this is the first opportunity that we have had to view any real data that your agency has done to look at the population that we're targeting and the population that we need to be serving in a better way. So this is going to help us, this is taking us thousands of light years ahead of blowing it in. And I want to thank you. I can't thank you all enough, you and your board. Thank you very much.
So to conclude, yes, we want to thank everyone who has been working on this process, who will continue to work on this process. It is iterative, it is organic, it is collaborative, it will continue to be so, and to thank those who are not here with us today. And with that, we're going to conclude the meeting of the central health board of managers, strategic planning committee, and it is 11:13. Looks close enough to me. We are adjourned. Oh, actually, I need a motion.
Move to adjourn.
I need a motion, second. We are now adjourned. Actually, I need a vote. All in favor? All opposed? Same sign from stating, now we're actually adjourned.